There is no sound.
It looks like you're muted, Leila. Oops.
There we go.
All right, can anyone hear us? Yeah, okay. Welcome everyone to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. In attendance, in the room, we have Charles Dickson, Gavlela, Gavdu, Foyle, myself. In Zoom, we have Superintendent Henry. We have Jude Gates, we have Sheriff Os, Captain Mann. We have Pat Conway, Jason Smith. Um. Wilson, who's in the bottom?
Robin.
Uh, Robin Burnia, and I think that's, that's it for now. So we're gonna do RFP openings for the bladder scanner.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, on the motion, Christian Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavdu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Refurbished hospice suites and family room?
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, Commissioner Gavdu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Opening for contracted prosecution services, Sheriff's Office.
I move to authorize the High Sheriff to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? I just have one quick question. This is the, this is, we're gonna use some of the, this is the discussion that we had when we're not hiring a person, where it's outside, right?
This will come basically as part of the thousand dollars for additional attorney sales in the backlog.
Do we know how many bids we got? Um, how many?
One, maybe two.
One, yeah, okay.
Right, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavdu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Award for the HVAC system cleaning?
I move to award the proposal for HVAC system cleaning to Air Care Environmental Services for an amount not to exceed two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars and authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, on the motion, Christian Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavdu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Computer equipment?
I move to award the proposal for computer equipment to Archangels for an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and ten cents and authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT, from the IT manager.
Second motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Big range. It's unbelievable. I mean, Robin, is that, um, just common for there to be such a range in pricing?
So what I'm finding is, um, some of these companies are fairly new, like Archangel, they got in on the game during the beginning of COVID. And they've been able to acquire a ton of equipment, and so they're able to have it and and sell it off as a, you know, lower price. They, they do a lot for schools. So I think they were able to get, you know, get more at a, you know, discounted rate. So that's why we were able to take advantage of these good prices.
Yeah, I know, I'm like, and is the equipment the same?
It is, it is, yeah, there's, there's no difference. I mean, I think you also have some of them uh, the higher ones that you have some companies that are trying to get into it that really probably don't necessarily, it's not their wheelhouse. You know?
Okay.
Well, thank you.
On the motion, or further discussion, not on the motion, Christian Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavdu?
Yes.
I vote yes. For the record, Kathy Stacey is joining us in Zoom. Monica. Consent agenda?
I move to approve the March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three Board of Commissioners' public and non-public minutes, the March ninth, twenty-twenty-three question and answer session with Warren Street Architects and Harvey Construction Minutes, and the March ninth, twenty-twenty-three opioid abatement funds working group session minutes.
A motion's been made.
Um. Second for discussion.
Yeah, seconded, uh, okay, discussion, Commissioner Gavdu.
Um. I haven't seen the minutes from Warren Street.
Yeah.
My email was asking to table that.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. I, I should have, I, I did see it, I corrected, sorry. So I'm going to revise my motion to table the March ninth, uh, question and answers session with Warren Street Architects. And so to table those and to move forward with the other.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, on the motion, Christian Coyle?
Yes.
Could you?
Yes.
I vote yes. So we tabled Warren Street Architect Minutes and Construction, Harvey Construction, and we approved the opioid abatement funds.
And, and I do have further, we didn't vote on actually approving the minutes, we voted to table, right?
We, yeah.
She made, she made a new motion to revise.
Revised my motion to table the Warren Street when we get those minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So before we vote on this motion, I just wanna make a comment. Uh, we are out of compliance with N Y U one A. Um, minutes are supposed to be posted five days after we have meetings. The other chair, Mr. Chairman, you're in charge. Um. Just noting that we're out of compliance, in fact, we're out of compliance every week. But I'm not particularly concerned with every week. Now we got two weeks. You know, that we're just getting this kind of stuff, and the public's not getting informed as they would expect.
Can I ask a question of Commissioner? Are you getting a constituent that's complaining?
No.
Oh, I was just curious because I, I, I wanna make sure if someone's complaining, they're not getting the minutes to be able to read. I need to understand that, but.
No, I haven't, I have not received any complaints as of, as of, you know, so far.
Okay.
Uh, I'm just noting that we're supposed to have minutes in five days, in five days.
I think that it's not practical because we can't approve minutes till the next week, right? And so this is like the regular course of the business.
And I think if we're at seven days, I think that that's.
And that's commonplace, but on, when there's, you know, the, the issue, as I see it, is we can either have quality minutes, which is what Leila produces for us, and, you know, week in and week out. Um, or you can do what a lot of other people do, which is very boilerplate, nondescriptive minutes. And it's compliant with the rule in, um, in technical, technical sense, but not in, um, the spirit. And so what I think we do so well, and it is a huge undertaking for, to, to draft these minutes. I, having done it myself personally on a number of occasions, it is incredibly time-consuming, like hours upon hours to do, draft any minutes. And so to the extent, and it's not like we're behind a month, we're slight, there are times, occasions where we're two weeks out. I personally don't think it's significant, given that the effort that we're trying to do is put forth good quality minutes, which is what we produce. And, and I say we, and really, Leila deserves all the credit because she is incredibly detail-oriented and specific, and I when I look at this and all these minutes that need to be produced, I think it's in, in, incredible, very impressive. That said, um, to, to, one of the ways we've allayed that concern about you know, the goal of ninety-one way and having quick production of minutes and giving transparency. Well, we don't have to, historically, we've rested exclusively on the minutes, but now we have the recording that goes on YouTube. And so in terms of quick access, we had, we give the, um, public quick access to the extent that it's seven days or fourteen days. Well, I think it would be hard pressed for a, can, you know, to face consequences for a ninety-one A violation, given, one, the detail of the minutes, two, the regular course of our seven-day cycle of meeting, and three, that we publish, though, you know, the recordings, so.
I, 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 and I agree with that. Um. Because we're recording and posting the minutes, it's less concerning. But this board decided to not record two public meetings. And, um, so the public hasn't had any opportunity to see what went on. Uh, at, at the, to, specifically at the Warren Street session. Uh, because we decided, I, I didn't decide, but we, if we failed to record, and we're gonna have another public meeting today. Uh, opioid abatement money review that is, I assume, not going to be recorded. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would encourage you to uh, record all of our public meetings. And this issue with minutes becomes really a non-issue because if we're posting them, I would agree with you. The public wants to know what went on, you can go watch it.
And I would submit that the, with respect to, and actually, this is a good transition to a couple of them. One, I, I don't believe that we need working sessions where we're not taking any votes need to be, uh, recorded. And, but it does transition to a, and the opioid abatement committee, it's a working session, working group to try to, you know, collaborate on ideas that will then come before the board. I think the remedy with respect to that is that, you know, we should rotate as commissioners in attendance on the opioid at those meetings, because, not because for lack of transparency, but the, the true essence of it is to generate ideas and to just, and it's like free discussion, and that it's not a, it's just a, a working group, not a meeting where we're going to make decisions, where we're going to, we, where the public needs to, you know, have their, we need to be transparent and accountable to the public. Because that's ultimately anything that comes through that working session is gonna come before us. So I would, um, you know, suggest that maybe, you know, it really doesn't, frankly, those working sessions, although it's, it's nice that, um, a commissioner is there. No matter what it's, you know, any decisions about the use of funds are going to come before us, we, none of us really have to be there, and there's no requirement that any of us attend that. As opposed to like the board where we need a quorum in order to have our meeting. So I would suggest either if, and, you know, when we did the ARPA Subcommittee, Commissioner Chiricello was selected as sort of the liaison to that working group. So I would suggest with respect to opioid abatement committee that, and because it's a working group, um, that we just nominate one commissioner. Or if there are more than one commissioner, and one of us is interested, then we go on a rotation basis or something like that. And then it stays at truly what it is, which is a working session.
That, that would put us in compliance, but if we have more than one commissioner in a room discussing county business, it's a public meeting, uh, even though the activity is a work session. And very specifically, ninety-one A says, you can't call it a work session, and that's not reason to not take minutes and to publish it. So, uh, I, that would be a good remedy if we did not have more than one commissioner in the room, uh, during that such session. I would be in agreement with that. But meanwhile, we need to comply with the law.
Right, so noted, let's move on. So we did, we did make that motion, uh, to table and
Yes.
approved the opioid minutes, so. Um, we're, we're gonna move on to surplus equipment requests, Department of Corrections approval?
I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty-eight, colon, twenty-eight, uh, twenty-eight, colon, eight A, and declare a two thousand ten Ford F, a Ford four fifty bus from the Department of Corrections surplus with the item to be sold through competitive bidding.
Motion has been made and seconded in the discussion. Uh, I have just a quick question, if you don't mind, um, what's that bus worth? I know it's twenty-ten, I know it's old, but what's the value?
Three hundred and fifty dollars is what it said on the
Yeah.
paperwork.
Right.
Is that true, Jason?
I have no idea what it's worth. I haven't, I haven't looked it up, uh, I have no idea. I don't know if Jude has anything, I have no clue.
No. I mean, usually it and usually it's like, who shows up at an auction, right? I mean, these are the realities of the circumstances.
I just wanted to know, like, a blue book value or whatever. Um, you have it?
No, no, I was just gonna say is that it, it will, would most likely fetch over three hundred, so would have to go up through the bid process or the bid waiting process.
That's how I understood it.
But with the RSA that's coming up that could be signed, well, the amendment to the RSA that's being proposed could go to three thousand dollars.
Okay.
First.
All right, not a big deal. On, on the motion, Commissioner Gavdu?
Yes.
Christian Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, uh, let's adult medical daycare information, I don't even wanna chime in on that at all.
Um, I would be happy to. I don't know, you guys have, you know, one thing that struck me is, one, there's an uptick. Um, but we do, it does seem like their allotment for, you know, we have, um, for the essentially some, well, Easter Seals has nothing, yeah, so we have about four months left of payouts, and we still have a fair amount of allotment remaining. Um, I was wondering if we should reach out to them and see how they're doing, if they're, you know, things are going, um, what do we wanna make a um, help them in any other way, given that we have a lot remaining in a, a significant balance greater than what the anticipated uh, cost will be for the remainder of the year.
Who wants to reach out?
Well, I mean, first we have to see if there's interest in that.
Chuck, I might suggest that maybe Jason have, um, Kathy Masso, we tell maybe as Fiscal Services Director or Manager for Long-Term Care. Yeah, um, part of the problem might have been too, that senior class, even though, um, Jason and I have both talked to them, and they're accounting people individually, they're still, they, they hadn't submitted for several months, which might be leading to part of the reason why.
Okay. Let's do some more investigating.
But this is something. Commissioners, they, they have just recently caught up with, um, a few of their past invoices, so that's in the process of being paid. Um. Jessica Wendell has reached out to all of them and every quarter just to check in with all of them. Um, but I'm happy to, um, touch base with them personally, as I do with several of them already. Um, especially with senior care, um, that needs, um, assistance, um, periodically.
Perfect. Any objections to that?
No.
All right, well, if Jason and I could just go and work on that.
Thank you.
Any other, um, questions on that? Adult medical daycare, no? We'll move on to the recruitment, bi-weekly report. I'm gonna start, I, I really like this report. This is a good idea. Um, we didn't have it last couple of years, but, uh, I like it because it lets us know what's going on. The part that I like the most is, uh, on the very back page, on the very last, uh, issue, it says turnover from two seventeen to three-three, no turnover for this period, that that, that I like. And it looks like we're, we're making some inroads in the hiring, which is good. So, but I really like, I really like this, uh, this information about it.
So this will come bi-weekly, and then you'll get your quarterly, that'll be a roll-up, so it would be good for you for delegation of executive purposes, too, is, is a speaking point.
Yeah.
Also to some of those division directors that have issues hiring, issues such as Jason Smith and Jason Henry. Um, and Pat on occasion, um, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the bar graph on page three really kind of shows where the greatest needs are, of course, nursing is really, that's, that's gotta be the toughest, but.
Yeah, if you want, I, you can put it up on our website, just as an informational piece, um, if you want, that way staff can look at it too, because we have had questions, how come we don't have any employees, how come nobody's hiring? So we could maybe put that up on that county website or something as well.
All right, it's, any other questions? Questions on that, no? This will be council family.
Um, I move to, uh, approve the remainder of the consent agenda, which includes an accounts payable this total of two million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifteen cents.
Second motion has been made, seconded, just a discussion on that, if not, on the motion, Christian Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavdu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Reports, uh, I'll start with, uh, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes, hi. Um, so the, I guess I'll start with finance. Um, it looks like we had a ERA P run this week of two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Um, so we're still pretty high on that. Chuck, maybe you can speak to, are we, how is like sort of some of the transition going with?
Um, it's some people are having some problems understanding it, though I thought it's kind of clear saying that, hey, if your application was kind of getting a queue, you know, on three sixteen, then we're honoring any arrears including utilities and internet, but going forward, you know, prospective rent and prospective, you know, going forward, we never pay utilities and internet in advance anyway, so the only thing that was in advance was, was an issue would have been, um, the rent, and we, as far as that lasts, it was you know, basically prospective rent would be limited to two months and one thousand dollars. Some people think, are misreading, thinking that if, whatever they had on their application, including three months out at full dollars, was approved, like
No.
No.
Yeah.
No, and some are trying to say that they've got a right to eighteen months of assistance, we were getting that kind of comment too, it's like, no, it's not right. It's not a right. It's like, you're eligible, but, you know, every program can have its own, you know, conditions. And, you know, we had to put in conditions because of, you know, funding.
Just as we're subject to conditions of the political.
But the nice part about is we notified everybody a little bit ahead of time, so people can start asking questions and getting prepared.
And we did an email blast, anyone who had actually put in an application, including landlords, this time they could start the application process too.
Um, so to say that finance has been busy with that, it's just, it's an understatement along with budget, budget, budget. So helping, you know, all the department budgets, getting our budgets, we are, um, gonna have some, you know, conversation about the overall picture, so it's, it's a busy time, and Chuck is usually in the weeds with spreadsheets, but this is spreadsheets on steroids right now.
Yes.
Um. Um, over in long-term care, we had two positive staff members for COVID, but, um, no residents, so that's good. The, um, assisted living facility renovations are in progress, so that's exciting, I think. Um, some of the renovations that previously happened were, um, really turned out nicely, it's, they're, it's beautiful as, um, that continues, so. And on Monday, we have Dr. Weeks starting, um, coming on board to help treat, so that is a really good thing. Um, over at the jail, we were talking about staffing, and, uh, you, you'll note from the, uh, report that we had three new, um, COs start um, for, during this time period, we also have three additional COs in the pipeline. Um. Department of Corrections is also busy, everybody's busy with budget, I think that's a common theme everywhere. Uh, there is fortunately no COVID at the jail, uh, the population is at one hundred and forty-eight, and there is an extremely high, uh, mental health acuity right now, which is really very taxing on um, all the COs and command staff, so. Sum up my report.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gavdu?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, um, so I'm just gonna be kind of quick. Uh, first off, I've been, uh, me, Allison, Chuck. Uh, you have been, uh, we met yesterday for continuing union negotiations with the maintenance group. Um, I will be meeting again in early April, right now, um, we're, we're in the very beginning stages, um. There, there's some work to do there, obviously, um. I know that, well, some, a lot of similar things, a lot of different things, uh, with other unions that we're dealt with, because this, these are the maintenance people that we're having a hard time filling with some of the tradespeople. Uh, I, I did give Allison the name of the contact, uh, at the Peking Academy for the CTE programs, I think Salem's got CTE programs too. Maybe, um, Commissioner Gavdu can find out a contact over there and see if we can hire some of these tradespeople, but, uh, considering I, but anyway, that's, that's the first one. Um, the second one is, you know, really good thing happened coming out of Washington, D.C. Um. I think I explained before, the very last day, the President came to, to speak to everybody, but, uh, they had already made appointments for me to to talk to the federal delegation. And they asked me, do you want, do you wanna cancel those? And I said, no, no, I'll not go to the, I won't go to the President Biden's speech, I'll go you know, to the federal delegation, because we had questions from Jason Smith, but I wanted to touch base with them. And out of that, um, you know, Congressman Papas's office was very welcoming and very, a lot of knowledge there. Anyway, um, we got onto a newsletter email and, uh, from his office, and they were dealing with, I think I mentioned this last week, about they call them different now, but they're basically earmarks. They used to have earmarks in the day, um, they've kind of brought those back, and the way that that works is, is every federal department has to hold one percent of their budget to help out, you know, their constituents, um, that's how that's funded, it's not extra money, but um, I did speak to Major Bashaw uh, to see if he had any projects that could fit into this AMRAC, um, application, and they did. Um, they separated two different items that they identified, dealing with, um, the dispatch and communications that not that we needed it now, but in the future, um, we put it in. Uh, they had contacted Major Bashaw and had him do a two-minute presentation, I think maybe twenty or twenty-five people had, had put in for the application. And then you had two minutes to explain what it was all about. Mr. Bashaw, I mean, Christian Bashaw, Major Bashaw reported back that, uh, he thought that that meeting went well, and in fact, uh, three or four days later, they, Chris Papas's office basically called us and said they were highly interested in our, in, in our um, what, what we're looking for money for, okay? Uh, and so it looks good because it's we, we sold it as it affects thirty-six different communities, so it weighs very well. Um, we're gonna combine them, they suggested combining them, uh, that total would, if we get this, is worth about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, I had, I had asked Major Bashaw, if he's any, they've done any of the, you know, these AMRAC things in the county. And to his knowledge, he said, no, it's just be the first one. That's the reason why I said coming out of the Washington trip was, had some positive effects, and, uh, hopefully we'll cross our fingers that we can get that. And lastly, um, I just wanna read a little a, a little email that I got from, uh, a representative in finance, I won't mention his name. Um. But uh, I just wanna read it real quick, if you don't mind.
Representative, you mean, uh?
Uh, it was a House representative, in Congress, was in finance, he's highly respected, um. And it was on a different issue I was talking to him with, uh, back and forth, but this just really speaks to Rockingham County and professionalism we have here and with the commissioners and the delegation and everything, but, uh, uh, you know, he had thanked me for my help on a different issue, but at the very end, he wrote, could you please prepare a lecture series on, quote, how to run a county, unquote, for my Merrimack County compatriots? I'm very envious of your sub-one-dollar tax rate compared to our two-dollar forty. So I think that that's, uh, that just kind of is a compliment to Rockingham County and the way we do things, and so, anyway.
It's also depending on.
It, it's unfair comparison.
Right.
Well, you guys can say whatever you want, but I thought it was good, and, uh, that's all I have, so.
The property values in, in Rockingham County far exceed every other county in the state. So, you know, the, they may be spending the same amount of money and it costs residents double per thousand. It, it's an easy possibility, they don't have million-dollar homes in Auburn.
I mean, it's not Auburn. Auburn's in Rockingham County, by the way, but anyway.
Uh, or wherever, Hillsboro County.
Merrimack.
Merrimack County.
Yeah. Um, I think, yeah. They're not mutually exclusive, which is, I believe that we do, I think that we work hard to run it, I, it's a nice nod in that we run in a we, we do our best to help people as well as, you know, be physically responsible. But at the same time, to your point, yes, it is an advantage to have higher property values.
Uh, I'm just gonna say, take a look at all of the cities and towns across the state. And out of the thirty-six communities that represent Rockingham County, not one moves over a dollar. Everybody else is in a whole different category. Now, you know, you can, you can compare the Lake Region housing, I, I saw real estate for them, so I know that the Lakes Region is a lot of million-dollar houses. But anyway, I thought that that was a compliment to Rockingham County. Uh, and a good one of that. So, let's, we'll move on to light item transfer.
All right, so, um. Um. Let's see, we're, I'm, I'm, all right, welcome, bye. Okay, I move to, uh, prove, there's actually two, there's a walk-in first, a second line under chance, so I'm just priming, because I'm gonna do these together. First, I move to approve a line under chance request in the amount of fifteen thousand, fifteen dollars, dated March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, as recommended by the Superintendent. Dated March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, as recommended by the Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Second. Most has been made in second. Any question? If not, on the motion, Mr. Coil?
Yes.
Mr. Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And furthermore, I moved to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of forty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. Dated March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, as recommended by the Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion?
Uh, I I'm not aware of this transfer.
Oh, so there was an email.
So where's the walk-in? Do you have some detail on this? I'm just curious.
We got it via email yesterday.
Yeah, I'm in late.
Right, and this is, I can.
Oh, I saw this. Yes, okay, I'm good with this.
Any other questions at all?
No, now I remember.
Sure, no.
Yeah, I have a quick question, if you don't mind. So, we're taking uh forty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-six thousand out of an inmate.
That's just a probably something radio from the.
All right, whoever has the radio needs to quiet that.
It's off.
Superintendent Henry, so he wanted to keep the radio, but he unmuted so that he could respond to it, but if uh I'd be happy. Okay.
All right, so my question is, is on the forty-three, two sixty-six for inmates of other facilities. What's left in that line? And are you anticipating a slowdown of? Um, of of anything in that in that category?
Because we go. There there in that line, that is housing, that's female housing outside this facility. So there's um. Plenty of money in that line, couple of things. One, for females, we've had to house more here because of methadone. Two, um, mental health acuity, so there's more in that line. And just three, so you know, I am coming with a reduction in that line for next year. As well, because we're not hitting the threshold. So, the two line out transfers out of that line, um. I'm actually reducing that line a little more than what I'm asking for now. So you're gonna see reduction in the budget next year for that.
Okay, that's all I was concerned about, but.
We like, for instance, currently, I think we have, and Superintendent, correct me if I'm wrong, we have like fifteen women we're housing right now between.
Ten outside and we have seven inside.
Yeah, and so, um, you know, obviously, that's when we keep them in-house. That's a significant savings to the county as opposed to, I mean, it's. There's costs that are being seen, obviously, but it's less expensive to house them within than sending them out, but.
And also past few years, you've had with felonies first and bail reform, the numbers have lowered now. My concern is what will, the trend has been not using as much. Now, come the end of the year, come next year, maybe after felonies first, we will, if we see a trend that it's rising back up again. Because of felonies first, and we're bound overs, then we may, then I'll have to keep a close eye and see if that trend. But past three years or so, it's been significantly be reducing, so I can reduce, but we'll we'll have to keep an eye on that.
And there's a cost savings by doing it this way as opposed to getting a lease for now. So. That was the the flip side of using utilizing this money now as opposed to getting a lease and having interest tied to it.
What, all right, speaking on the interest, on the interest, what what is that interest rate? Because.
Well, we'll we'll see, because the Fed's passed on the quarter, quarter percent increase and. It usually doesn't take too long for that to show up in lease quotes.
Right.
It'll take longer to show up as far as where you get for interest rate on your CD accounts, stuff like that, but uh.
Okay.
So, yeah, this keeps it out, so um to Commissioner Boyle's point, this keeps it out of being affecting the next two budget cycles for the Department of Corrections.
Yeah, okay, further questions? Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, thanks for that explanation. We're out now. Engineering and maintenance proposed Eastern Meadow Lock Management Plan.
I move to approve the Eastern Meadow Lock Management Plan as outlined by the New Hampshire Fish and Game Department. And authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? On Meadow Lock, stay ahead.
I mean, Jude, I I don't know, like you, you've done a great job. Working through this because, I mean, in essence, it's just about a hanging cycle. And so, I mean, this could have been truly problematic. And we're satisfying it with our mowing cycle. I mean, the could, the consequence of worst is maybe some of the hay hang.
Absolutely. The quality of hay that we get will not be as good, however, um, and. Fishing game still has it under review, but this was certainly a major, major sticking point, so. If we can go forward from here, I'm I'm pretty hopeful that it'll be much more smooth sailing. Thank you.
We, we did. Yeah, I, that was just, we haven't taken the vote on it.
Okay, so on the, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, Carousel uh Ascom Wireless Upgrade Propose.
I move to approve uh the. NWN Carousel Ascom Wireless Upgrade Proposal Agreement and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the IT manager.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Mr. Coil?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And I just have to add, there was a second part that I neglected on the awards um for HVAC system cleaning. Um, so, um, so I, I'm just gonna add that in now, which is. Um, I move to award the proposal for, there's two parts of the HVAC cleaning, um. And to award the proposal for HVAC system cleaning to um air care environmental services. Um, so there's actually, I'm gonna move to um amend the. Motion I initially made entirely. So if we go back to page, the first page, number four, for HVAC cleaning system. I miss uh spoke when I said air clean environmental services for two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars, so. Um, I wish to uh revise that motion and I'll make the motions accordingly, so.
Actually, Mr. Godu, you do.
Move to revise.
Take back your second, so she can do the amended one.
Um, yes, but I'm not following you.
So.
Uh, first page, B.
On the HVAC system.
Oh, just something left.
I made an error in the award, so I'm just going to correct my motion if that's, if the commission would indulge.
Sure, we voted on that motion.
Right, so I.
So you wanna.
Revise that motion.
Revise it, so you take back your second, she opens it up for a minute.
Okay, so I move to award the proposal for HVAC cleaning to air care. Uh, environmental services for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. And to air duct clean for an amount not to exceed two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And authorize the chair to sign all its necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Motion's been made. We have a second.
Second.
Second, if any discussion on the new one made.
Where the twenty-five thousand?
That was always there. I just, um, I.
But it's not written.
I know, but I missed, I just, this was the, this, you can look at that page. I looked at the page improperly.
Ah, so this just wasn't prepared quite, right?
Just.
The motion.
I didn't correct.
Okay, understood.
So, on the, on the new motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
All right, now we're back to uh Finance Office Reimbursement Resolution.
Okay.
And Commissioner Coil's gonna read it, read it.
So the reason I'd like to still keep the jails vehicle amount in there is a just in case. Because it's not, because line and transfer now has to go before the executive committee. So, just in case, obviously, if it's not needed, we're not gonna finance. It's not guaranteed that the executive committee's gonna pass the line.
We just wanna be protective.
Yeah, I just wanna.
Somebody wants to speak?
Sure, no, I was just.
Okay, Commissioner Coil?
Are we? Can you hear us?
Okay, I think it was just the projector and that. Okay.
Resolution of the Board of Commissioners, County of Rockingham, New Hampshire, declaring its intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of lease financing for certain equipment. The Board of Commissioners for the County of Rockingham, New Hampshire, the county, has determined that it may be necessary or desirable to advance money to pay the cost of acquiring two. Twenty twenty-three Ford Explorer Police Interceptors, potentially the equipment. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Rockingham, New Hampshire. One, the Board of Commissioners adopts this declaration of official intent. Two, the Board of Commissioners reasonably expects to reimburse advances made or to be made by the county to pay the cost of acquiring the equipment. From the proceeds of certain lease financing with TV Equipment Finance Incorporated. The maximum amount of financing expected to be issued in one or more series for the equipment is eighty-seven thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars. The vendors supplying the equipment to whom monies would be advanced by the county are Gropone Ford. For forty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars in McFarland Ford Sales Incorporated for forty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. The foregoing resolution um. Is to be adopted by the Board of Commissioners at its meeting on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. And I move to adopt the foregoing resolution as written and read as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
I agree.
All right, let's go to Mental Health uh Commission and Office Furnishings.
I move to approve utilizing category one point one-two mental health services of the Arthur Project Funds to purchase office furnishings. As outlined in the memo from Human Resources dated March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, for the mental health permission office space as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Well, second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
It was pretty low. I opened a whole office. You did it very, we're closing that. We can't close out items if we really can. It's very efficiently done. That was why I commented.
Any further discussion? If not, on the motions, Mr. Godu?
Yes.
Mr. Coil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Social media app policy.
I move to approve the amendment to personnel policies and procedures, chapter seventeen dash nine. Social media policy effective March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion?
Yes, yes. What's the change? I have, I have, and I remember we discussed that, but I didn't actually see a memo. That said what the change was.
The policy is actually attached, and it shows where the changes were to the policy. It's in our package.
I did do a red line, yeah, so you can see that.
Thank you.
Well, and that's a clean copy as well. So you'll see the red line, and it was that interneal, they made adjusted uh changes. It wasn't a sewer.
So all of this red line is.
Redacted information, like that's going away, and then the new information is being submitted. It's submitted on there as, I think, in that policy on the bottom.
If you look under F, use, using social media at work. There's all, there's a subsection that started prohibitions on the use of the TikTok policy. And in our packet, it was included.
Any further discussion at all?
No, that's good.
Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Doyle?
Yes.
Which we gotta do?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Uh, wellness event.
I move to approve a wellness activity, Elements Massage from Port uh Portsmouth, New Hampshire, utilizing Signal Wellness Dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I think we did this last year.
Yes.
And it was a huge hit. They bring in the chair, the massage, they come and do massages. And massage chairs for the, um, and this is for Commissioner Godu, but it really is a nice thing. The staff, anybody can come down and schedule like, what is it, fifteen minutes or so? And it's like. Already, yeah, precisely. I mean, it's just a nice thing, and I think really well received for in terms of morality.
Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Wellness event, healthy bingo.
I move to approve a wellness activity with Raffle Drawn, Healthy Bingo, utilizing signal wellness dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, uh, any discussion or not?
Um, how much do you think this is gonna, I just had a curiosity. I didn't see it in the.
She didn't give me the cost, and I apologize for that. They're running in at about a thousand dollars. We have seventeen thousand dollars that Cigna I have rolled over from last year. They're not gonna, I, I'm, it's gonna be hard for me to ask them to roll over monies that we don't use this year. So we're trying to utilize things as quickly as we can.
So we can use, utilize all of that.
I have to bet, it has to be attached to some sort of health.
Yeah.
Related thing, so we're attaching everything that we're doing with recommendations. Cigna sends us some stuff, we submit it in. And then they vet it and let us know whether they would consider it under the healthy dollars.
Do we wanna consider the smoothie bus again?
That's underway. We're, we're looking at that. We're actually looking for a grilled cheese truck.
Would that come under our?
Where? So I have two things. That, where, well, they have different ways of can, can do it. It's been looked into. Um, it. So, what, yeah, you know, vegetables and stuff, but we're trying, we're trying. So, Cigna, we're betting that for Cigna. If that can come through Cigna, we have the wellness funds under um our, our thing, a separate wellness fund here. But I'd like to try to see as much as I can get vetted through Cigna.
I mean, that's what we should.
And that's what I'm trying. We're trying. If we cannot get that, we probably will go forward with the smoothie truck again, because that was a big hit. Um, so we might just do that, because that runs about five thousand dollars, and it goes to all the places, you know, all of our.
It will go over to the.
Departments. And it is, that it was well received too by the staff, so.
Nice.
They park in the bar, in the back parking lot, everybody. So over uh at the courthouse for deeds in the county attorney's office, they go. Or, you know, bring, goes over to the jail and.
Right, that's a future one. We're bringing it back to.
Hopefully, uh, hopefully, is that something you think you can use Cigna dollars for?
The smoothie bus, yeah, yeah, so we could. Yeah, great, yeah.
Okay, bringing it back to bingo. So we have the motion. On the motion, Commissioner uh Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Wellness event, spring wellness webinar.
Um, I move to approve a spring wellness webinar activity in Raffle Prize Brian utilizing Cigna Wellness Dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Not, Mr. Coil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Allison, you and your team have a, they're very creative in your use of some of these events. Go, I mean, I think it's well received, so thank you for that.
Yep.
Uh, so, non-essential staff, month fourteen, noon time closure.
I move to approve non-essential employees who reported to work on Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and were subsequently notified they could leave at noon. Paid for the remainder of their shift without utilizing their free time.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not, Mr. Coil?
Yes.
Mr. Godu?
Yes.
So yes. Long-term care services, Jason Smith, uh, Corp Physicians Medical Director. And physical uh physician services renewal agreement.
I move to approve the Corp Physicians Medical Director and Physician Service Con, Services Contract Renewal. And authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommend, recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Mr. Coil?
Yes.
I vote yes.
The nice thing is all these contracts have been, the previous event.
Yeah. Health Pro, the end of the services.
Move to approve the Health Pro Management Services LLC Agreement, authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care.
Second, been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Northeast Rehab Hospital Network Patient Transfer Agreement.
I move to approve the Northeast Rehabilitation Hospital Network Patient Transfer Agreement. And authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Here's your coil.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, bid waiver request filed fourteen.
I move to approve the McFarland Ford Proposal and Bid Waiver Request in the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-three Ford. Police Interceptor U T, Utility SUV and authorize a Senior Director of Finance to obtain financing with TV Equipoings Finance as recommended by the High Share.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion?
I think we uh fortunately had an opportunity to speak with Major Bashaw, and I personally did, spoke with Major Bashaw. And Chuck offline about the uh, that this was, you know, uh fruitful time to take advantage of. So, um, I feel comfortable.
Okay. We should go on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Mr. Coil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, line item transfer request.
I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred dollars dated March seventeenth. Um, as in twenty twenty-three, as recommended by the High Share.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Uh, discussion on that? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Coil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, we're at Department Head Updates. I'm going to start, I'm gonna start with Kathy Stacy, she's right in the middle, in the middle block, so.
Oh, that's the best block if you run, you know, Hollywood Squares, right? That was the best block. Everybody wanted to be the middle. Oh, that's the best block if you run, you know, Hollywood Squares, right? That was the best block, everybody wanted to be the middle square.
What was the middle square in Brady Bunch?
Oh, I don't know, I don't know, not sure, probably Greg. Okay, well, oh well, whatever, anyway, listen, um, so a couple of things. Um, I have a bunch of, uh, supplies that we no longer need here, so if anybody needs. Legal size folders, paperclips, I have an HP drum I'll talk to Robin about, as well as a Rico cartridge. For, um, a printer we no longer have, uh, cash register ribbons, um, and all kinds of stuff that we no longer use. So trying to clean out the supply cabinet, so I'll send something out to everybody, because if anybody can use any of this stuff, I'd love to just give it to you. So that, you know, it, it gets used. Um, I wanted to know from the chairman, which, which town are you disenfranchising? When you said Rockingham County is thirty seven, uh, thirty six towns, and we have thirty seven.
Thirty seven.
Oh, well, Google says thirty six.
Yeah, they're wrong. It's thirty, thirty six towns in one city.
City of Portland, don't forget my peeps.
Exactly, and, and Kate, I'm surprised you didn't correct him.
I did, I said thirty seven.
Anyway, um, pretty, pretty much that's it, I, I did have a question with regards to the webinars for Allison, because I'm just curious. You guys are gonna be doing some type of healthy bingo webinars, are those gonna be available to staff? Is it just during the day, is it in the evening, how, how is that gonna be run, so that I wanna make sure that my staff can participate?
Everything is voluntary, happening, and some of the webinars, the bingo is one thing, and then the other webinars are separate. Um, some of those webinars are a lot hour long. I think they have to work with their O D Ds if they're gonna take their lunch to do a webinar, um, because that's paid time. But, um, I'm gonna put on the flyer that they have, it's not mandatory, it's voluntary. Um, so my expectation is they do it on their own, unless they get permission from an O D D to do it during work time.
Is that the same thing with the bingo?
The bingo, I believe, would be the same thing, I have to look into the bingo, Kathy, but we'll do a flyer.
Okay.
Get out to the O D Ds first, so that you can, then if anybody has any questions, call us, because we wanna vet it first to make sure.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, and the last thing I'm gonna say to the, to the board is that, um. I do appreciate the fact that you guys are recording these meetings, but quite frankly, who wants to sit and watch a Commissioners' meeting? For an hour and a half on YouTube, um, and that's, that's what. And obviously, I don't mean to, uh, offend anybody, but it's so much easier to read the minutes, because you can just scan through and look for what you're looking for. So I just, I just wanted to tell you that, because I do have staff who look to the minutes, as you know. Um, and, um, just, just a comment, so thank you, have a great day, everybody.
Well, I'm just gonna address that for you, Kathy, um, the, the three Commissioners decided to give it a shot and see, you know, how it works. Um. Under, under the fact that there's more transparency, um, Commissioner Goddoo, to his credit, brought it up, and the three Commissioners agreed. Uh, I do notice that, uh, you know, we, we have somewhere in the vicinity of, uh, either, like roughly, the average is like forty people are viewing it. But that number's probably like that, because it's new, maybe somewhere down the line, it picks up some, some stuff, and I understand what you're saying, it's. There's not a lot of people probably watching it at eight thirty in the morning, but it gives them an opportunity if they're, um, you know, if they're home on the weekend and wanna watch it, and.
But I do think it means that, eh, to your point, I think it, it highlights the need for sort of the thorough, the minutes to be thorough. And not just, you know, run through, and so if that means, and I don't think, um, under ninety one A, we actually have a duty to publish them. Um.
Do you?
Just make them publicly.
Available, it's just publicly available.
Draft minutes are okay.
Right.
You do have to post the final minutes.
Right, but they don't have to be posted.
Or, or like on the website.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
They have to.
Be publicly.
Yeah, that's fine, a lot to be public.
Yeah, so, um, but I think it, that the import is that, because to your point, Kathy, I agree, nobody wants to necessarily. Lots of people would rather just read the paper, but it means that it's important that the minutes are thorough and complete, and not just. And, I mean, I think, actually, we've had, um, uh, our council, you know. Comment on how thorough the minutes are, and I think that's important for a lot of reasons. So it, it, to me, it's worth taking a little more ti, the extra time is worth it for the quality of the minutes.
Thank you.
And I'm, I was just timing one more time too, like, you know, I wear another hat on the Tower of Derry, and, you know, um. And we've always been, we've always had that YouTube and live TV, I'm sure you do in Salem as well. Um, it may be a little bit different, because I don't know how many people wanna watch the opening of bids, but that is what it is. I think, again, I think under the, under the guise of more transparency, uh, people.
More is more.
People will see it, uh, you know, either reading or they'll, they'll look at it different ways, so we're giving it a shot and see how it works. Mr. Goddoo?
I think the point is that the video doesn't replace the need for minutes. I think, and, and I think we all agree on that.
Right.
And the only thing I disagree with is with the dynamic personalities that we have in this room, I think that if people knew that they could watch it. There'd be, there'd be much higher viewership.
That just reminded me, that just reminds me of the song when I was a kid on Sunday Morning Star, the day, who will it be?
I don't know.
Okay, Dave Maynard, we've heard enough.
I'm dating myself, I'm sorry. All right, I'm gonna, all right, it's like Jude went into the middle square, so I'm gonna go to Jude.
Good morning, everyone.
How can you follow that?
Honestly, I'm sitting here thinking, the Brady Bunch, community auditions. Um, I don't have a lot to report today, I want you to know that the Well House, the new access road to Well Number Four. Is all but done, I expect they'll have it finished up this morning, so that's really huge to keep the well development going forward. Um, yesterday, we spent several hours working on, uh, mixing valve in the A B block at the jail. Our foreman was down there as well as, um, a plumber that we were able to get from Palmer and Secard. We had all of the equipment, we haven't had a plumber to do the install, so unfortunately, it was a, a bigger job that we might have. We would have liked to have had it scheduled and done before there were issues, but it didn't work out. And then the second piece of that this morning is that now that they have really good water flow in the A and B tiers. We're finding issues with the drain, the drain's not keeping up with the amount of water, so today I've got my, my foreman. Who fortunately has a master plumber's license, but that's really not what I want him to be doing. Um, is down at the jail with a Palmer and Secard plumber, trying to make sure that those drains are taken care of, so that the A B showers are running well. So it's, it's almost like deferred maintenance, if you don't have the plumbers to do the plumbing work, it's catching up on us, so. Um, we'll see how it goes. We have our new pickup truck scheduled for delivery tomorrow, I hope. And, um, with regard to the old one, I will be asking to have it declared a surplus, similar to what the superintendent did today. Generally, we take all of the vehicles that have been declared, and, um, we put an ad in the paper, and we take sealed bids for them, and they're opened up at a Commissioners' meeting. I think the Sheriff's Department's had very good luck with trading theirs in, but we run ours into the ground so. Um, thoroughly, that, that hasn't really been a good option for us, so we'll have a pickup to go. Jason, actually, each of the Jasons, I think, have buses to be declared and disposed of, so we'll put those all out together. And, um, see how we do. That's all I have, thank you.
Uh, at the meeting that I attended last night, I became aware that there is a shortage or, uh, supply chain problem. Electrical switching panels, um. The circuit breaker panel, I can get exactly terminology they call that.
Can't hear him.
Can you, can you hear me?
I can hear you, I lost Commissioner Goddoo entirely, and I could hear him before.
Last night at a meeting, I became aware that of a project that's going on in Salem, that's been delayed by nine months. Because, uh, of electrical, of switching equipment that is not a bit readily available. And since we're going to need similar equipment, I'm wondering if we've ordered some of that material in advance. Or we're aware that this is a long-term purchase for our construction project.
The long lead items have been identified by Harvey, um, a lot of it is electrical switchgear, emergency generators. There's some other items as well, and, um, they have all been identified, yes, and I think that they'll be covered once we sign the contract with them.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jude.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna go to, uh, County Attorney Pat, Conway, Pat.
Good morning, everybody. Um, I used to watch that show too, Star of the Day, that now I'm gonna have that song in my head forever, thank you, Commissioner. Um, but anyway, uh, things are going well here, where, you know, training our, our, our recently hired attorneys. We have three of them, and we also have three legal assistants we recently hired, so there's a lot of training, uh, going on here, which is great. But it does take up a, a lot of time. Uh, we also have another, uh, big A F S A trial happening here, aggravated felony of sexual assault. It's, it's been going on for about a week now, um, which has kept a couple of my attorneys and victim advocates and legal assistants very busy this week. Um, we had a number of settlement conferences yesterday here, which is when a retired judge. Uh, comes to the courthouse, someone with a lot of experience, and goes over cases with counsel. And victims and defendants, and we try to reach a negotiated resolution, it's a good way to, um. Try to resolve a case when the parties are kind of close, but just can't get there. Um, so those were really successful, two out of the three cases were resolved, and then the, the last case, uh, we're still negotiating. But just wanted to bring it up, it's, it's a great, um, tool for us here, I think, at the County Attorney's Office. To resolve difficult cases, it also gives our victims a chance to confront the defendant if they want to. To almost give a victim impact statement before sentencing, and it also gives defendants the opportunity to apologize. Um, and to accept responsibility, um, in front of the victim, and so it can be great for restorative justice as well. So I just thought I'd, I'd bring that up, um, but it, it's a great tool for us. So other than that, uh, we're plugging along, we're busy as usual, but things are good.
Okay.
May I ask, uh, who, what judge, M Q?
I know, it was Judge Flaber.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just have a quick question for you, we, we were copying, we CC'd on an email, uh, in particular about a ninety one A request. Has that been taken care of, you know? I don't know if you know which one I'm talking about, oh, it's been.
I think it's all squared away.
Looked like it was to be.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. It looked like it had just, there was, the recipient had some issues with her email.
Okay.
And it seemed like it was all squared away.
Perfect. Right, let's go to Sheriff, says, and Captain Mann.
Good morning, uh, I just wanna give a shout out to Commissioner Chiricello for giving us that knowledge. About those, uh, grants from Congress and Pappas Office, um, and I know Major Bashaw is working very hard on it, he had a meeting with, um. Pappas's office the other day about the five consoles and the tie-in to the state court, so that's a significant, um, cost reduction. For the sheriff's office, especially coming into a new building, well, hopefully, we should be able to get these five consoles plus that tie-in. Um, so thank you for that information, I appreciate all the help that the, the com, the complete board, all three you do for us. Uh, on the good news is, um, we just gave another conditional offer to a dispatcher, looks pretty good, so that will bring us down to two. Uh, we've been getting a lot of applications, uh, we've changed things up a little bit too, when it comes to hiring dispatchers. Where, when they apply for it, uh, I think it's very important, before they make a decision to come to work for us, that they actually sit in the dispatch center. For two or three hours, you know what I mean? Um, just to get a feel of it, and see if this is what they really wanna do. Um, we've got some good applicants, so we're gonna keep our fingers crossed, and hopefully, we should be fully staffed very shortly. Otherwise than that, I appreciate all the help that all three of your county commissioners do for the sheriff's office. It's nice that we all work together as a team, um, it's, you know, we do have the best county in, in, in the state. And I just wanna emphasize how much I appreciate all the help that all three of you do for us.
Thanks, Sheriff, and I think that, uh, that, that, that idea is pretty good to have them come in and sit in the seat for a couple, couple of days or a couple of hours, whatever. But, uh, it'll be a big difference when we move you out of the closet and into the new building.
Oh, yeah, I think you're gonna see a big difference once we get into that new building, just from morale anyways, for the dispatches, I mean, I mean, I, I couldn't be locked up in that room. For eight to twelve hours, I mean, it's, I mean, I, I know all three of your commissioners have seen that, that office, but we're definitely looking forward to moving into a new building. Um, it's just, it'll be great when it happens, and thank you.
Yeah, Robin Bernier, I T. Hi, Robin.
Good morning, everybody, uh, a few things going on here, um, in the I T world, obviously budget like everybody else. I was just notified of a, a potential risk sent out by Microsoft through a patch update last week. So I am sending an email out now to all users to reboot their machines, that will bring in the fix to what that potential risk could be. We're not in, we're not in a situation where we need to take action, other than to reboot our machines, so that way we can go ahead and, and put that fix in place. So, uh, you'll see that momentarily, and for everybody, that we do need them to reboot those machines as soon as possible. The county attorneys, the Sheriff's Department Registry of Deeds have all been notified as well, so, um, you know, the users will just start to, to reboot their things. In addition to that, we have Honeywell on site at the jail, looking to, uh, shore up any issues that we may have, may not have had with, uh, the servers down there. We have one of the techs on site, we replaced some equipment yesterday, um, in those servers, so we should be back up one hundred percent. And good running order, uh, with some good failovers in place before the end of the day. That's it.
Good. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Jason, Jason Henry.
Good morning, everybody, um, I'm too young to know those songs, so I'm just gonna stay out of that.
Really throw me down.
We didn't say howdy doody, we said.
Um, I would like to thank Jude and her department, specifically, the shower valves, I called her the other day, um, because we had a. A, a stack of, of, um, concerns in the inmates, because the showers weren't working, and she was very quick to get somebody in and take care of that for us. And now it's the drains, but, um, yeah, it's one of those things just kinda cropped up, I know it was on a list to do, but unfortunately, it happened quickly. And Jude's department and her took care of it. Our food vans were having some issues, we were, had to replace some stuff in the steering column, to come to find out, we replaced the whole steering column. Uh, Jimmy Dills has been doing a fantastic job, patchwork together for us, so we can still limp along and use it, not have to go to, you know, renting something. Or figuring something out, um, as the part's being ordered, it's gonna take, uh, uh, four to six weeks for the part to get in, so. A, a big shout out, it's been a huge help, um, on that end. Also, I purchased a backup camera, because I'm tired of my staff who can't seem to drive, who keeps hitting the lower tailgate. Uh, we had Evans and Jimmy Dill keep fixing, so Jimmy Dill put the, um, camera in for me, which is all, all mounted and ready to go too. Figured it was a cheap hundred and fifty bucks, hopefully save us thousands of dollars, I hope. The one nineteenth Academy starts Monday, we have two people going to that academy, and a bunch of instructors that will help out there, along with all the other counties. Well, the send instructors. I, um, like to thank Glendale, because one of their food vehicle did go down for a day in an emergency situation, they provided one of their food trucks for us. Um, quickly to get, so we could get stuff back and forth, so they were very accommodating. And lastly, I sat on the, um, this past week on the opioid abatement committee. Um, having discussions, again, I've been trying to find a way to pay for M A T, and we, as a group, voted for this next round of grants. That, when it does come out, um, spending up to five million dollars reimbursement on M A T, going back to twenty twenty. So I'll be, we'll be looking at what we spent between programs and medications and those kinds of things, to see what we can get reimbursed back. Now, it's totality, they may do an M A T, so it, the ones that can, it might be over five million dollars, if they do, then it will be a percentage portion of what people get back. But as we, nice, healthy conversation of, uh, something still better than nothing that we've gotten back, so it's a start. So I'm very excited about that.
How many, how many counties are doing that?
Everybody, don't I think that the counties still?
Twenty twenty.
What's that?
Well, how many were doing it in twenty twenty?
Uh, but almost, well, almost everybody was doing M A T in twenty twenty of some, of some sort of way. Um, they weren't all doing pre-trial, um, necessarily, and maybe not everybody on board a hundred percent with induction. But they were doing, if people came out the street, were still on it, slowly worked into induction. Nobody has the O T P, uh, program that we have, um, inside, so nobody can get methadone like us, but nobody has that piece. Um, so ours is actually, the medication's actually cheaper for us, the cost for some other ancillary stuff is maybe a little more compared to others. But the, um, other jails are paying a fortune for methadone, because they have to bring him out to the street, and every day, bring him out. It's, it's between staff hours and what they charge astronomically for. Bring him out, it's, it's between staff hours and what they charge astronomically for medication. We've actually, we're doing better than them on, on having the program, which, so, but. When we figured this last out for the last round for grants that I worked with Chuck with, we figured over two years, we were looking around seven hundred thousand dollars. Between programs and everything else of our cost, so. Um, I, I would assume it's gonna be that or more. We're gonna be looking to see if we get reimbursed and again. Uh, something or nothing, I'll take it. I, I, last thing with that is, I'll, I'll just throw us ahead of time some discussion. I did talk to Commissioner Coyle, uh, it's my rep last night a little bit. If we do get that money, um, we may wanna discuss a way to be able to. Put it in a separate grant line that could be used to be pulled from for, for MAT for the jail, so that way. You wouldn't have to hit future tax dollars, uh, as a thought, so. I don't know if you can or not Chuck, but that's just something to think about. Thank you.
Good nods from Chuck, Superintendent.
Gonna go to Jason Smith.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, just to update you, assisted living is back in full compliance, uh, with their life safety and their health inspection. So we're meeting all requirements under the state of New Hampshire eight oh five regulations. Um, we met this past week with, uh, Homeland Security and, uh, for our annual Seabrook Station Radiological Disaster Emergency Plan. Um, we, there's a new director that's, um, overseeing the, um. The education component, which we're out of compliance with, and that's due to the fact that they haven't had anybody in that role. Um, so more training. They also updated the equipment and, um, we just recertified our plan, um, so that would, well. Um, in addition to that, I, uh, attached a copy of the long-term care brochures. Uh, for, uh, review by the commissioners. If you have any recommendations or comments, um, then I would appreciate that. At your availability. Uh, in addition to that, uh, Dr. Andy Weeks will be starting on April third, so we're excited to have our new physician here who has lots of experience. And is with, um, uh, core physician group over at Exeter Hospital, so, um, he has decades of experience in different specialties. So we welcome, um, his expertise, uh, within our community. And then finally, um, the Lions Club, um, we do an annual, uh, drive for hearing aids and, uh, glass frames. Uh, so the residents and family members and staff all participated in those donations. Uh, just like everyone else, busy with, uh, budget and prepping for, um, new fiscal year.
Very good. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
I'd just like to comment on the brochure that was designed. I thought it was laid out well and it looked, it was, uh, a nice brochure.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Work is done. Well.
All right, we're gonna go, I think we've done Zoom land, and now we're gonna go to Allison.
Hi, good morning. Um, I'm sorry for coming in a little bit late. Uh, it's been very hectic. Um, negotiations are going well, just a lot of prep work for both. I think we are at a place with the sheriff supervisors on the outstanding article. Uh, Chuck and I got that resolved and we're set, so we'll. Formalize the last piece to that with Steve Arnold, um, working with Bill Cahill, of course, on his proposals and stuff, more to come on that. Chuck and I have just been deeply involved in a lot of the, um. Wage and, uh, analysis and scenarios and stuff like that over the last week and a half, a lot of time spent there. I have started to work on a couple of the requests for new positions with regard to. Creation of a job description, the PvP, and then doing the rating on that. That'll hopefully be completed by Monday or Tuesday of next week for those that had new positions. And, um, yeah, working with, uh, try, with Cigna on, you know, where our wellness funds are and trying to, uh, get the staff. Involved in that, so they're doing a great job with that to get that out. So that's where we are right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Henderson doesn't have anything.
As, as, well, again, Allison mentioned some as far as negotiations, wage analyses, things of that nature. Obviously departmental budgets, again, any departments, if you see that there is a, uh, expense line that you need added. Um, again, like, like Jason, Henry, you had that one regarding. Um, former inmate transportation, you know, so that one will be a new line this year as an example. Um, again, if you have any questions on, on, you have an item you're on budget for, but you don't know which line it should go into. Please reach out to myself, Katie Casey, um, you know, or even Jesse, um, we'll be able to answer that, any questions for you. Um, just working on lots of payroll projections. Keep in mind that the projections that end up in the department post-budget, um, most likely won't be the ultimate. Um, but at least there'll be some like placeholder numbers that'll be in there for, to be included with the departmental budgets. Um, we do have our new grant manager, um, Emily Tomasi, who will be starting on Monday. Um, so, uh, Jason, one of my, Henry, one of my first things will be. That she's getting around to all the departments and obviously I'll give her some heads up on, uh, she'll probably be. Working with you as far as in the other nine counties to try to get. Um, successful applications through this time for the MAT, uh, grants from the opioid abatement, uh, commission.
Chuck, I just, I just said Merrimack County brought their grant right to this last meeting too, so that's gonna be a great connection for them back and forth.
Yes, yes, that's, that's great. So again, I'm looking forward, you know, for Emily for this position to serving all the county departments. You know, whether it's, you know, Jude's group as far as any PFAS type grants are available out there, other infrastructure grants. Whether long-term care or some things out there, maybe we also look at that, um. Uh, problems on there now, but the moose plate grants as far as for going back through, making sure we get more of our records archived as well. Whether they're resents or, uh, or, you know, inmate records even too. Um, that way we reduce our paper.
Some of the deeds.
Yes, if there's any sort of amounts there that might be able to help out with, you know, what restoration, so it's not coming from budget. Since the, the state makes it our responsibility to.
Right.
Give all the, the records from the state, so. Um, so again, looking forward to this person helping out, you know, all the, the county departments. Let's see, um, I did submit because it was only through the portal, online portal with Gopher for that county emergency. Equipment application, um, is around a hundred thirty thousand dollars, so we'll see what they say nay to, but, um, it might be, again. I applied for everything that could potentially qualify, because the worst they could do is say no on certain things. Um, but there's definitely other items that we, we should get some money for, so that will be good. Um, and, and it's overall, um, busy, also many UKG meetings still going on as far as conversion. We're almost at the point where they will take all the permit sheets information that we provided them. And they will enter it into the new system and it can kind of be, start being tested. So we're looking forward to, to that, so. All right, thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, Leila, do you have anything you wanna share with us? Coming out of the commissioner's office, so.
Is your budget? Website changes. Insurance claims. So many things.
This pile, it's piling up.
Busy season.
Yeah, let's go.
I would like to entertain a discussion with our catering company. To not supply anything in styrofoam. And I'd like to suggest that we write a letter to them to that effect, asking, requesting that they don't supply us. Any styrofoam products, um, and. Not demand, but request and see what, if there's some difficulty with that. But I, I'd like to see all recyclable materials, uh, paper. Particularly rather than any plastic that we can avoid.
So who's?
Superintendent.
Then, then is that Jason Smith?
Just so you know, we, we, so when we go down with our trades and stuff, we do use styrofoam because we put individually for the inmates. Um, or if we have suicidal and a lot of people issues, we, we need, uh, to be able to use styrofoam.
As opposed to paper?
Yeah, paper doesn't really hold up by time food and everything else gets, gets through here. Um, uh, so we have using the styrofoam, I mean, and. I mean, if they got some sort of alternative that's gonna hold up well enough to get all the food inside of here, we could definitely entertain it, but. I've been around for twenty plus years and haven't found anything else besides styrofoam that holds up well enough.
I'm sorry, Commissioner. I was just going to say my situation's different here in that we, we prefer China, uh, to hold food temperature. Um, our dishwasher is extremely old and has. Um, it's exceeded and exhausted its life. They don't even make parts for it anymore. Um, it went down during my last survey, um, that could lead to immediate jeopardy, um, which means that we could get fined. Um, Jude actually had to send her team out of state to go pick up the piece. Um, I will be submitting a new washer, uh, new, uh, proposal for one this year. Um, however, uh, you, we really try hard, but sometimes the, the dishwasher does break down. Um, and there are numerous patches to try to fix it. Typically, China is used, and so I don't know why you're using, um. Uh, paper or styrofoam currently, but I, I, I will look into the matter.
Or certainly, um. Uh, I, I, I think it's a very good point to think about our environmental impact, but, um. I met with, uh, some time ago when we were talking about some of the changes to long-term care. Uh, we had a meeting with Jason Smith and, uh, myself and, um, met with some people from Glendale. And they were really receptive, so maybe, um, we could just start with, I think it's a wonderful idea to bring up that. You know, sometimes it will, might just be easy to have a conversation rather than starting with a letter if you're okay with it, just like. Have a meeting and see if there's some places, you know, it would be pretty easy for us. Just on our own, like it's nice, we can take it just on a very simple level, which is instead of using these, let's just get some funds down here. So, I mean, it's a.
Right, I just wanna eliminate it wherever it's possible, and if, if. If the, the corrections facility needs styrofoam and there's really no other alternative, then I understand that.
But where we can.
But there might be alternatives. If we, if we suggest that, they may say, oh, well, you know, there's. I mean, they have those plastic or wax coated paper that they serve salads in.
Yeah.
I was impressed with that, you know, with the, you know, so they must, they might have some other units. I just, styrofoam is the worst.
Exactly, and nothing ventured, nothing gained, right?
So who, who would have that discussion? Was that Jason Smith? Would you have that discussion with catering service?
I, I'm, I'm happy to have that conversation, um, for, as they are here in this building, so, um, I'm, I can have. Um, whoever you would like, um, but I can definitely, uh, reach out to them to set up a meeting.
Jason, I'd like to be, I can be on that meeting with you too.
Sure, absolutely.
And I'm happy to sit in if you want to, just, uh, but it seems these guys, they're, I mean, have a great relationship with them, yeah.
Okay, any other new business, Allison?
I did, I'm sorry, um, I do have new business, um, we use Tap House Media for our, um, advertisement. And their, uh, agreement was pretty, uh, neutral in that it didn't have any language. Related to indemnification, uh, confidentiality and a number of other items. Um, for the jail, they went with Labree Media and their agreement is pretty comprehensive. I think I would like, I, I think I'm going to because it's indemnification or asking where there's indemnification language. Uh, would this need to go out to, um, Primex for review?
Yes.
Okay, my second question, if I do and I work with them to get language, can I have permission then to sign it? They're supposed to be actually going live with it this next week or on April fourth or fifth, I think. Um, I don't know that I'll get it back from Primex in time, but I certainly tried to. But if I get it back and, and we make the recommendations, um, do I have permission from the board to sign the agreement not to hold things up?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
I think all three of you should go on board. Anything else, folks, for new business, anybody? All right, um, we're gonna do public comments. Is anybody from the public in, on Zoom? I didn't see anybody, but I just wanna make sure that I didn't miss anybody. No, okay, so we're gonna be going into non-public here soon.
And with that, I move to enter into non-public session pursuant to ninety-one A, uh, colon three, section two regarding personnel matter.
Most of them made to go to non-public?
And.
Second. Seconded. All those in favor, say aye. And everybody have a great day.
We, we need to invite. So we need. Um, I, oh, sorry, sorry. Jason, why don't we, why don't we leave Chuck in here and then are we, you okay if I text you to come back, sign back on?
Of course, or, or I'll just come down, just give me a call when.
Perfect. We have, we had a number.
In public, just let everybody know.
So. We're back in public session and I'm going to make some motions with respect to sealing the minutes. Um, we, as I count, had a discussion of, um, of four major items for. Non-public with respect to item number one and two. Um, I moved to seal those minutes indefinitely because they could affect the adversity, the reputation of any, uh, person other than a member of this board.
Second. Most of them made a seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
All right.
I, I'll do a roll call just.
Yes.
Yes, myself, yes.
With respect to item number three, which was, um, a, um, accounting issue. I, um, I don't believe those need to be sealed. Um, with respect to, um, the final discussions, um, I moved to seal those minutes until. Uh, July first, twenty twenty-four, because it could render a proposed action ineffective.
Second. Most of them made a seconded, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Yes, I vote yes.
I'm sorry, twenty twenty-four, I meant twenty twenty-three. I misspoke, I, on dates, but what I meant is twenty twenty-three.
So now I don't have a, I don't have a guideline as to how this. How, how I'm supposed to do this, but.
Um, wait. First, we need to exit public, meet the public.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, well, do you think, I think it's a motion to, um. Cable or to pause the public session, because don't we have to come back into public to go back into non-public?
No, this is a, I have a grievance, it's a completely.
So we'll reopen the public meeting to go into non-public.
We're in public now, right?
No, but if we're going back into non-public.
You're gonna, you're gonna make that motion in public to go into non-public.
Right, so.
Are we going back into non-public?
Yes.
I don't know.
This is non-public unless they want public.
Right, so we'll, since you invite them in and then you will ask them if they want to, that grievance in public or non-public.
We're in public. When he comes on board, I will ask him if he wants to have this in a non-public setting or a public setting.
Correct.
Whatever he decides, if he says non-public, then we'll make the motion to go in the non-public.
On the personnel.
Uh, uh, anybody live? They're not doing, this is not on Zoom, right?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it's on Zoom?
Yes, it is.
Right now it is.
We need to help yourself, there are drinks and crap, there are numbers. Wherever you'd like, do it right here. Um, do you guys want, feel free to help yourself. And we are at, our level of transmission is substantial, so in this setting you are allowed to unmask. But when you go back outside, you gotta re-mask to leave the nursing home.
Great, thank you. Okay, I just, uh, uh, so we're in public right now. Uh, I'm just gonna go around the room just so everybody knows who, who everybody is and just introduce yourself, go briefly, go around.
Assistant Superintendent John Vando, Assistant Jason Henry.
Allison Kukowski, Senior Director of Human Resources, Commissioner Coyle.
Uh, Commissioner Chiricello.
Commissioner Godu.
Leila Metello, Commissioner's office.
William Doyle, National Fractal Employment.
Okay, so I'm going to ask, um. If you would like to have this meeting in non-public or in a public setting?
Non-public.
Non-public, okay, so Commissioner Coyle will put us, bring us into non-public with a motion.
So I move to enter into non-public pursuant to ninety-one A, colon three, three guarding personnel.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we are going into non-public. Leila, if you would.
Okay, we're back in public, um, and, um, I. Well, after grievance hearing and I make a motion to uphold the grievance. The step-two grievance filed by Jesse Clifford.
Second. We've made a name. Uphold.
I'm sorry. And they have. Oh, sorry. Grievance submission to step. Yeah, I think it's the grievance submission to step two. I don't know.
But if we're gonna uphold the. Doesn't that mean we agree with?
So.
His grievance?
You can't make a motion in a negative, so you're gonna do the opposite of what you think.
So, so to, yeah, um. So, so, to, yeah, um, step-two grievance from, yes. So it's to uphold the grievance and then you're gonna call my vote?
Yeah, so I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded, so further discussion as far as.
Uphold the grievance means.
To.
To deny. I thought it was.
So Jason Henry, then you received this to you, you received a step-two grievance from Officer Clifford dated January twenty-fifth. A step-two, you have fifteen days to alter it. Officer Clifford put the initial grievance forward and was denied by me on January eighteenth. So I think you're.
You're upholding this decision.
Is it the superintendent's?
Yeah, we're upholding the decision.
Sorry, yes, so, okay, so I'm gonna remake the motion because I don't think I did it very carefully or, um, crafted it.
I rescind my second.
Go ahead and stay.
I think that's right.
Okay, so. I make a motion to uphold the denial of the step-two grievance. For Officer Jeffzy Clifford.
Motion been made.
Second.
Further discussion, not.
Is that, um, the step-two is coming to you, so sorry, the grievance.
One was through the step-two process, so yes, the, to uphold the denial of the grievance. By Superintendent Henry.
Okay, so on the motion, is ready, people, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I will vote no. So two to one. On that motion.
So they have the option to grievance.
To.
To take an arbitration.
Okay.
That's their option.
So. Um, now, we have come, um, out of non-public for purposes, um, with respect to, um. That, that non-public because it affects the, um, reputation of. And personnel of an individual, I move to seal those minutes indefinitely.
Second.
Most have been made to sale, all those in favor say aye, I actually need to do a roll call, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Now, um, now that we've come out of done, of, that we're back in public session, I'm now gonna move to enter back into non-public. Pursuant to ninety-one A, colon two, regarding personnel matters.
Second, you made a seconded on the motion, Commissioner Badu.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
We've just come out of our non-public session discussing, uh, salary and payroll figures. I make a motion that we seal these, uh, minutes until July twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that motion, so on the floor, we have the motion, and Commissioner Coyle had to leave just to let everybody know. Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, we will, we adjourn.
Enter.
Adjourn. All right.